Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. I will call this being to order today's date is June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The time is five thirty P. M. Welcome to all those who are in the audience this evening and the presenters tonight and those of you who are listening at home. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Motley, here. Friedleeb?
President.
Paulson?
President.
Biondich?
President.
Johnson?
Here.
Aaron Zelli?
Here.
Coffey?
President, would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, move to item four on the agenda, which is a public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone from in the audience that would like to address the city council this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak this evening? Please come forward. Turn the green light on on the on the microphone and please state your name for the record, sir, and welcome to the city council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for having me and listening to me today. My name is Ricky Angler. I'm a resident at Ellis Nedlock Tower.
Go ahead, Mr. Angela, thank you.
Well, I knew this stuff, but I ain't gonna lie, I'm using it for political means in county or state. I don't know what I'm gonna run for, but anyways, the thing about opposed is I believe that the law enforcement, the EMTs, the fire, you all need a day of reckoning. And what I mean by that is, city council is gonna be blamed for everything that happens, so let's give the city council a blame by people who wanna blame you come talk to you on a Saturday at the park. And same with law enforcement's getting a bad break. The only people say defund the police are criminals, 'cause I've talked to the people. You guys know what I do. And for instance, there's people I talked to today on Third Avenue and Sixth Street. I said I'd mention you. Third Avenue and Sixth Street and on the Second Avenue, and I told them about my proposal, they were good. Priscilla and Neri over there, they were great. Every child with a parent, so they don't think I'm weird. I address at all these upset and everything. Everybody wants other communities and everything. And what I call it is the mayor's picnic. And see this shirt? It's an office bar shirt, Larry, back in the day. Not where Paulies is, but back in the day. And I wear that only 'cause I love this town so much and I've had that shirt and kept it. But anyways, but what I wanna do is give you guys a weekend, not a day, 'cause you deserve more than that, in my opinion. No matter what, you're political, Republican, independent, or Democrat, I really don't care. I see you serve us and I appreciate it a bit, and I think other people should too, along with law enforcement, fire, and EMTs and that part of it. And I think it's unjust the way the police are treated because criminals' parents don't like it. Too bad. I don't want them to change, because if they wanna have authority, and the reason I'm doing this is I came up with this two years ago and I wanted to put it together. It's my daughter OD'd, and if it wasn't for the Virginia police, and then me and EMTs, I wouldn't have my baby girl today. So you guys deserve it, and if it wasn't for you guys running this city, my daughter would not be alive today. And that's why I feel and I know, 'cause I'm not the only father or mother or grandmother or aunt, uncle that this city has saved. And Larry, you'll admit, we were the poorest, I was a miserable kid, he dressed me on my nineteenth birthday to keep the city safe, and I told you that that was a good thing for him to do. He did right to keep this city. That's the kind of guy I was. And then I changed my life in nineteen eighty-two, and now I came here. And I think I was so miserable, 'cause I have dyslexia, and I couldn't read until I was taught to read. And then once I was taught to read, look out. You see my writing? You can tell I have dyslexia, but the thing I wanna do is Friday, I wanna start it with sidewalk sales. We need to get businesses back there, we need people back here. The council knows that, and I do too. And 'cause I grew up here in the greatest time and the greatest city in the world. And Saturday, I wanna start the mayor's picnic when that place is done to the grand opening, and that'll be the first mayor's picnic we have, because of the grand opening there. Because that's deserved, that new place. I mean, everything's outdated, all everything. We need to get modernized, and I agree with it a hundred percent, and I thank you for giving us the citizens that. And I am the voice of the people, 'cause I go to the people. And if you got an argument of that, talk to me. But, and then Saturday, I wanna have a parade, like we used to, and keep it focused on Virginia. You guys are being there, you know, we'll have a queen, you know, who wins, or a king, I don't care, or a transgender person. I don't care! But I want something like that recognized, and that parade will give the chance. Like, remember, Larry, when we were kids, and Gary probably remember too, when we were kids, we used to ride our bikes in the Fourth of July parade, and there were hundreds of us, and everyone knew each other. Like, you knew me, you knew me. And we know that, 'cause why? Where do we come from? Here. And now it's time we step up and put Mayberry back in our town, quit listening to statistics to say, "We got the biggest town, the biggest crime." No. I'd pull any woman, I'll follow you, you won't even know I'm there. At one o'clock in the morning, start at Chestnut, walk to Twelfth Street, and if anything happens to you, I'll be there, but you'll see, nothing will happen to you. You're safe. This is our community, it's great, and we need to give you guys a weekend. And we'll have, I thought it too. And then Sunday, at that mayor's picnic, instead of wasting our money on the Fourth of July fireworks, let's give it to where they honor deserves, the people who run our community. And we'll have them on the mayor's picnic, 'cause every other community around here is doing it. And that way, we'll have it at a special time, and I figure to bring more money into the community. There's no way, no win-win. There is no vendors allowed on mayor's picnic, because once you get vendors, then you get land of the loons. I don't want that. I wanna keep it so the community's meeting their people and, you know, the community's coming back together. We're putting Mayberry back in our town, and that's what I wanna do, if that makes sense.
Well, it does, Mr. Angela, and we appreciate you coming in. I know you have a strong passion for the community. You demonstrated that over the course of the last couple of years, particularly with your passion and how you want to see the city of Virginia thrive. And so I would ask you to do all these ideas that you have, put them together, come and see me in the office, we'll lay out a little plan and see if it was feasible to work, and then we'll present it to the city council. And I know some of those things could be combined with some of the other events that are already going on in town, but I appreciate you coming in, Mr. Angela, and please give me a call and stop by my office and put something together.
You know, and thank you, Larry, 'cause I know you will, you're real. But there's one thing I wanna ask, and I wanna give you guys this, it's, I call it, you name it, but I wrote this song for Virginia, Minnesota, and... (singing) Well, every side I see brings me back to my hometown. The place where it's gonna need, running plain and I see my memories always take me home. Sweet Virginia, sweet Virginia, my hometown, Virginia, Minnesota. We got lakes, we got parks, we got that old-fashioned candy, and our kids still play hockey in the streets. Queen of the Irish, but it's home to me, my hometown. Sweet Virginia, sweet Virginia, my hometown, Virginia, Minnesota. Well, what I wanna do is I wanna ask you guys to adopt that as the national Virginia, Minnesota song. I'll put piano, I wanna get the band and the choir to play it and record it. That's why I haven't recorded it. I have my own studio, I play every instrument in the world, and I wanna give you that song. And I'm so sure of that song, I need to meet with Brian so he can write up the royalty rights, and I wanna give all royalty rights, because nobody knows. What if the state of Virginia wants it? Charge them a million, and then your city can have it. Only right I want is the creator of it. And if you guys, I'll get that to you, I'll have the music and everything written out for you guys, I'll have your own little CDs or whatever you need. But I'm asking you to consider that, 'cause I love this song so much, and I'd be so honored to be the guy that wrote it, not Bob Dylan or somebody, but just a simple guy that come, family came here from nineteen old six and it's been here that long. That's all. I appreciate you guys, so I'll think about it, I'll get with you, Larry, and you tell me what I gotta do, and I'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. Angela.
Thank you, no, thank you, guys.
Appreciate you very much for coming in.
Have a great day.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll move to item number five, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councilor or the citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item five point one is the approval and correction of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, and the special meeting that was held on June first, two thousand twenty-three. Item five point two is the adoption of finance resolution number two-three dash zero-one-one, the schedule of bills. Item five point three is adopt the resolution for final pay estimate number three to May Voos Systems for the asbestos checks for homes in the public safety project area at a cost of three thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. Item five point four, approve the following transit merchant licenses applications. Five point four A, Don John Masary doing business as Generous Jerry's Fireworks. Item five point four B, Alex Haugen doing business as Go Figures LLC. Item five point four C, Barry Lane doing business as Street Tacos and Eats. And a late addition to the council agenda for the consent agenda is, just came in this afternoon, Donna Walls doing business as Barb's Fry Bread. Item five point five is approve the following travel requests. Item five point five A, council, administration, or clerks to attend the Coalition of Greater Minnesota City Summer Conference, July twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at Thief River Falls, Minnesota, at a cost of four hundred and seventy-five dollars per person. Item five point five B, Jacob Keel to attend the Image Trend Connect Conference, July eighteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, in St. Paul, at a cost of two thousand five hundred dollars. Item five point six is to approve the application for the Holy Spirit Catholic Church to conduct excluded bingo application on Thursday, July the twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, at the Holy Spirit Church Social Hall. These are the consent agenda items for the council, looking for council action.
I'll move approval.
Counselor Friedle moves to approve the council agenda, and it's supported by...
Or...
Supported by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? First, Counselor Paulson, and then over to Counselor Motley. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull five point two.
Very good, thank you. And Counselor Motley?
Five point five B, just a quick question.
Five point five, oh, B?
B as in boy.
Okay, five point five B. Okay, very good, thank you. So, looking for, we have a motion, a second on the floor, to approve the agenda with the exception of five point three, is that correct? Five point two and five point five B. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We'll start with the first one, five point two, the adoption of finance resolution two-three dash zero-one-one, the schedule of bills. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, on page nine, there is an item that is pertaining to my, my business, so I need to recuse from that item, and I just wanted to let the council know.
Okay, very good. So, let's take a motion to adopt finance resolution number two-three dash zero-one-one, the schedule of bills, looking for a motion?
Moved.
By Counselor Johnson, supported by?
Or...
Counselor Motley. Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Accused.
One recusal. Motion passes with one recusal, thank you. We'll move to item five point five B. Counselor Motley?
Oh, yeah, just a quick question on the travel request. There was two names, the other one was Justin Bachman, so, but on the five point one B, it just had one name. Will it be both names, or?
Well, the, it's just the one.
Okay, so it will be both?
There are two?
Okay, just making sure for the price, but, okay, thank you.
So, okay, let's make a correction to the minutes. We're approving Jacob Keel to attend the Michigan Trend Conference, St. Paul, at a cost of twenty-five hundred dollars. And then a second, Justin Bachman, to also attend the same conference, is that an additional twenty-five hundred dollars?
No.
Or is that total? Total of twenty-five hundred dollars for both Jacob Keel and Justin Bachman from the Fire Department to attend the Image Trend Conference. Thank you for catching that, Counselor Motley. Is there a motion to approve those two to attend?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Biondich, is there support?
Or...
By Counselor Friedle, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item six, appearances. Six point one, we do have an appearance this evening, Mr. Eric Simonson from Flaherty and Hood, to provide us an update on the two thousand twenty-three legislative session. Mr. Simonson, for the record, please state your name for the record, and really appreciate you coming up here and giving us this presentation, and welcome to the Virginia City Council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. For the record, my name is Eric Simonson, I work for the law firm of Flaherty and Hood, and we represent the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Thank you for the opportunity to come and just talk a little bit about the two thousand twenty-three legislative session. Britt, this may be an off question, but do we have a PowerPoint, or no?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm just gonna work off of that, and I'm gonna kinda jump around a little bit, but you should have a yellow folder in front of you that's got a fair amount of information. There's a session recap, there's some information on local government aid, there's on the back of that LGA sheet, there's a specific graph for the city of Virginia, so you can get a clear understanding of what some of the proposals were and what they would have meant to the city, and then, of course, the final outcome based on what happened with the, with the final tax bill. CGMC went into two thousand twenty-three with some top legislative priorities. They're very similar to what we kinda pursue every year, LGA being at the top of that list. Of course, we remember that in two thousand twenty-two, we didn't have a tax bill, so we had some leftover work that we had to get done in two thousand twenty-three. We wanted to see about a hundred and fifty million dollar increase to the LGA appropriation. Given the fact that we started the session with almost eighteen billion dollar surplus that didn't seem to be an unreasonable ask, so we went into the session with pretty lofty goal of trying to get new money onto the appropriation. We wanted to update the formula, because the updated formula hadn't been touched since about two thousand thirteen, and the updates in the formula ended up benefiting all of our member cities, including the city of Virginia. And we wanted to see a provision in the LGA statute that would have allowed for automatic inflationary increases going forward. That would have made everyone's life so much easier. We weren't successful in getting that particular piece, but in the end, I think we did okay. I think you all are pretty aware of how kinda the legislative session played out and what the end results looked like. I'm not gonna get into all the things that the legislature passed this year, but I wanna focus in on a couple of priority issues for the coalition, because we came in with our list of priorities. We had a DFL trifecta controlling the House, the Senate, and the governor's office, they had their own set of priorities, and then, of course, you've got every other interest group under the sun that shows up with their priorities. So it gets to be a little bit of a sticky mess, but in the end, I think in terms of the CGMC, we did all right. Budget forecasts, you'll remember, when the February forecast came out in February, I do that, we showed about a seventeen point four-five billion dollar state surplus, and that's after factoring in inflation. Before the inflationary factor, that was probably closer to nineteen billion dollars. About five billion of that was ongoing money, the rest of it was just one-time money for that particular year. Some of us wondered if they would even be able to spend that kind of money, and how much would be left over at the end of the session. And as it turns out, as we now know, they were able to spend every dollar of that and then some. But even with the DFL trifecta, they had some of their own unique challenges. It was just the sheer volume and the speed of legislation. Normally, the legislation session starts, things start off pretty slow, and then they ramp up. They started out of the gate with a lot of large policy bills and kinda left some of the budget work for middle of the session towards the end, and that was unique. We have DFL majorities that are dominated by metro area members. That's a real challenge for us in representing greater Minnesota cities. There's a lot of legislators that are brand new. A lot of them, I can tell you with personal experience, just don't really understand some of the nuances of greater Minnesota and the cities that are out here and the challenges that you face. So there was a lot of time spent on just trying to get people up to speed, and I'm absolutely fascinated by the number of new legislators that just don't really want to listen or don't really want to learn about things outside their own space. That makes life a little bit challenging. The LGA proposal, and Mayor, you'll, you'll remember this, Representative Lizagard was our chief author in the House, and I can say in all honesty that without Representative Lizagard and the position that he was in, as Chair of the Property Tax Division in the House of Representatives, and the fact that he stuck with the Coalition on the LGA, we would not have gotten to where we got without his help. Plain and simple is that he fought against his own caucus, and he worked very hard on the conference committee with the Senate to get us to where we ended at eighty million dollars. So kudos to him, kudos to you, Mayor, I know that you were down and testified, appreciate that. Excuse me, it's always good to see, excuse me, it's always good to see folks from greater Minnesota come down and testify. But we were competing with a lot of the DFL priorities in the tax bill. They wanted to do, you know, big things with child independent care tax credit. Governor Walls had been talking about refund checks to, to all taxpayers in Minnesota for months and months and months, and didn't really wanna let go of that. There was conversations around public safety aid and housing aid. All of that falls into the realm of the tax committee, and that's what we were working against. Governor Walls came out with his initial budget proposal with thirty million dollars in new money for LGA. Thirty million compared to the seventeen billion that we have available. Not really adequate, not sufficient, pretty weak. CGMC responded to that and basically called him out and said, "It's not really adequate, it's not gonna do the job." He came out with a supplemental budget, and he proposed forty million dollars. So I guess that, you know, perhaps was at least a step in the right direction, but we had some more work to do. The LGA increase that we ended up getting in the final outcome was eighty million dollars of new money each year. That brings us to about six hundred and forty million dollars for the statewide appropriation every year that gets divided out amongst all the cities. We think that's pretty good. We got the formula updates that we wanted. The big change for Virginia is we brought in a new need factor that considers the ratio of commercial, industrial, and utility property to your overall tax base, and that benefits you in the long run. You'll see in that chart in your packet that you did get an increase in two thousand twenty-four, but I think the big thing about this particular proposal and the formula going forward is that it gives you a longer off-ramp to be on local government aid, and I think that benefits the city as well. Bonding was another thing that we focused on quite a lot. We don't necessarily advocate for individual cities and their projects, but we do advocate for a balanced bonding bill. We have seen a number of bills over the years that have been very unbalanced, maybe metro-heavy, and so we try to make sure that that's at least balanced in such a way that it benefits everybody in Minnesota, not just one particular area. This year was a real challenge with bonding, because we had some, kinda some political games being played mid-session about should we vote for the bill, should we not vote for the bill, should we ask for more things, because the Democrats couldn't pass it by themselves, they needed Republicans to help pass that bill. And it got to the point where the Democrats actually said, "Look, if you're not gonna help us, we're just gonna pass an all-cash bill, we're gonna do all DFL projects, and the rest of you, you know, can, can do what you need to do." Luckily, that strategy didn't end up happening, and in the very end, we did pass really a historic infrastructure bill, one point two billion dollars, or almost one point two billion dollars in cash, plus another one point five billion in geo-bonds. And a part of that agreement was that the DFL agreed to put three hundred million dollars more into nursing home aid. Frankly, I think that benefits both parties, but I don't know why that was such a sticking point, but the final outcome was very good for greater Minnesota cities, so the Public Facilities Authority getting two hundred and eight million dollars, BDPI program at ten million, greater Minnesota Housing Institution, childcare facilities, local roads and bridges, unprecedented amounts of money being spent in all those programs. It was, it was a good session with respect to that. Lastly, and I'm not gonna talk about everything, but I do wanna touch on some of the work in the environment space, because I think some of this will carry over into two thousand twenty-four. The top of our list in terms of priorities in the environmental world was securing state money for cities to help them take on this lead pipe problem. I don't know how big of a problem that is necessarily in your city, but it's a huge problem statewide. And at the end of the day, we helped secure two hundred and forty million dollars of state money for lead pipe abatement across the state. That helps leverage additional federal funds, and just put that into perspective, that's like a step in the direction, right? I mean, this, this, we'll be talking about lead pipes for the next several cycles, I think. But that amount of money was appropriated. All cities have to map their lead pipes by October of two thousand twenty-four, so there will be grants available for the city to do that work. And this money is not just to be used for the public side, it can also be used for the private side when it comes to lead pipe abatement, so that'll be helpful for homeowners. Our last-minute bonding agreement included a lot of money for P-SIC, eighty million dollars, another almost ninety million for water infrastructure fund, and two hundred and sixty-two million dollars for local greater Minnesota projects, and most of those are wastewater treatment plants across the state. A lot of that is one-time money, but nonetheless, it's, it's really a historical investment. We played defense on a number of policy proposals that we think would have been harmful to greater Minnesota. This repeats itself year after year, it seems, but with this particular legislature, they feel pretty empowered to try to do things, right? And you gotta make sure that the things that they're doing are actually gonna benefit cities and not necessarily harm you to the point where it becomes a problem. So we blocked a number of attempts with very few legislators to help us to change the Public Facilities Authority funding that would have benefited the metro area, basically shifted a lot of that fund from the rural areas to the metro. That seemed to be problematic. We worked to narrow the scope of permit changes that would have hampered growth and economic development, and there really was, like I said earlier, a little consideration as to how new changes would affect greater Minnesota. Going ahead into two thousand twenty-four, be a traditional year for a bond... Going ahead into 2024, be a traditional year for a bonding bill, even though we just passed a very large one. Governor Walz has indicated that he'd like to do another one in 2024, maybe another billion dollars. That would be good. It remains to be seen what the surplus will be when they come back in February. You know, we'll have a new forecast in November and February 1st. That'll give us a sense of where the state budget actually is. And I think, to be honest, just given the sheer volume and the pace at which things were passed here in 2023, there's going to be a lot of things that need to be fixed in 2024. It just went too fast and it was too much. This fund all begins again on February 12th of 2024. It's an election year for the Minnesota House of Representatives, so that always plays a factor as well. And the last thing I want to touch on, and I know your time is short, but public safety aid, I mentioned this earlier on. This was a priority for the Democrats to get something done. They ended up passing a one-time appropriation of $300 million, and that's for cities, counties, tribal governments. And there's a population-based formula that works out, and it looks like the city of Virginia will probably get about almost $365,000. And you can anticipate those monies by the end of the year. And that can be used for anything relative to public safety. There are just a few exceptions to what you can't spend it on, but I think you'll find a sheet in your packet that kind of clearly lays that out. Mr. Mayor, I could go on for hours about things that were done, but I really wanted to focus in on the LGA piece because I think it's important to you. I think it's important to your city, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but I don't want to take up too much of your time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Simonsen. You can take up as much time as you like. Whatever you would like to disseminate to us. It's been a very successful project for the city of Virginia. We've, we actually were able to benefit from the trifecta for the most part and with our lobbyists and particularly with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. We're here today and able to do our project today is because of the lobbying efforts and your efforts from the Greater Minnesota Cities to do that. Because if it wasn't for you, wasn't for our local legislators and for our representatives individually through the city of Virginia, through our lobbying firm, we wouldn't have received these funds at all. So I appreciate you coming up and taking the time. Does any council have any questions that they'd like to ask of Mr. Simonsen? This is a time to do it because he has all the information at his fingertips. Counselor Biondich.
Thank you. And it's not really a question, but I appreciate the packet and the explanation and how all of this works when you are down there doing your job. So thank you for coming up here to explain all of this to us.
Honestly, is the best part of my job is to be able to get out of St. Paul and come out here and do stuff like this, so I appreciate that.
I hope you can enjoy.
Well, my trips down to the legislature were, there were quite a few trips down there, and every time I think, and you're there at the Capitol lobbying on behalf of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, and can't thank you enough, the investment that we make in the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is, we get a big bang for our buck, so we thank you for that.
You appreciate that. I'll bring that message back.
Would you please?
I will.
Thank you, Mr. Simonsen.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You do the same. Have a safe trip back. Okay, we move to item number seven, unfinished business. Item 7.1, the property located at 410 Fifth Street South. I know a permit was taken out for some work. Do we have any information? Brian, do you have any information or any updates on this property?
I have no additional information and no additional updates at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments from the council as this property is apparently moving forward with some renovations? Thank you. We'll move to item 7.2, the clinic lease. Britt, do we have any more information about maybe some conversations with the Essentia Health or are they ongoing? Ongoing, thank you. Any questions about 7.2, the clinic lease? Okay, we move to 7.3, the rental code ordinance. We did, we have some information in our packet later on about that under committee reports, but, and we will probably revisit that for discussion during that phase, but does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this under unfinished business? Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering, since we have passed and adopted a rental code ordinance, if that can be actually removed, 7.3 can be removed under unfinished business?
Yeah, you're requesting that may be under unfinished business, item 7.3 be removed. We've already passed the rental code ordinance and the fee schedule itself. We could certainly do that unless a council request that it stay on the unfinished business agenda or anything from staff that would require us to do so. I think we don't need a motion for that, do we, Britt? Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Okay, item 7.4, the Iron Trail Motors contract. That's, there were some questions about, we have at the state level, is that correct, Britt? We're still working through that and with the department management and budget. But other than that, I think this contract stays, you know, as a work in progress. Adjustments could be made at a future time, and it stays on the agenda in the event that some changes are requested or we get some additional information regarding the contract or some additions or deletions from that. Does anybody have any questions or concerns or comments about item 7.4 on the Iron Trail Motors contract? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item eight, discussion items. Item 8.1, there's a request to approve the blocking of 100 block of Chestnut Street for business after hours on Wednesday, July 26, 2023, from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m. And who will be sponsoring this?
This is Laura Lentsch in Chamber of Commerce, and the host for that evening will be WA Fisher and Revive Virginia.
Okay, WA Fisher, Revive Virginia, and the...
Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Counselor Biondich.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Biondich, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.2, approve the revised Rural Ambulance Service Assistance Contract with St. Louis And this was moved from the committee hall for recommendation for approval.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Motley, is there support?
Support for discussion.
By Counselor Paulson for discussion. Further discussion, Counselor Paulson.
Mayor, could you just refresh my memory? What was actually, was there anything added or updated to this? Was it just the Juneteenth holiday or is it?
This is the revised, the Rural Ambulance Service Contract.
Brian, would you, Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor, the, as we last viewed this, we had, there was a request by the council to negotiate in some language based on the fact that there's a perpetual renewal agreement or renewal clause in it, just that we would have the opportunity to review. So there's been additional language put in that allows for an annual review to occur.
I remember that, and thank you for refreshing my memory. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
That was moved by, Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. I just want to point out for the general public that we are still going off of some rates from the 1980s, and we are still being reimbursed $23 for an emergency call and 22 cents a mile. So this is one of our challenges as we try to provide adequate safety coverage, not only for city limits of Virginia, but for our entire service call area. It's, the county has not looked at, and that's why we wanted to put that, I know that's why I wanted to put in this, have this discussion, because it's, 22 cents a mile is like a third of what the federal reimbursement is for mileage, and $23 I don't even think covers our cost of billing. So I would really like to see this looked at very regularly until we can, and my parents are benefit of us being in our, they're out in the county, country without any townships or anything, but that's why I want to make sure that was in there is because we're barely getting anything from the county, and we provide a very important service to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. So let's refresh, who made the motion? Counselor Motley made the motion, it was supported by Counselor Biondich? Who was it? Okay, was a motion by Counselor Motley and supported by Counselor Paulson, is that correct? Okay, that's what it was. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Biondich.
So have we had conversations with the county, or how do we go about trying to increase this, this rate?
This is an increase. It was previously $16, so this is the first step. And that's where Counselor Johnson had recommended that every year we try to review it with the county and have that discussion again every single year when it renews. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is an annual review. The reimbursement was $16, now it's up to 23, as Counselor Johnson alluded to, it's still not enough. But, okay, so it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.3, approve the memorandum of understanding for MAP regarding the 2023 Juneteenth Holiday. Moved to approve by Counselor Friedle, is there support? By Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 8.4, approve a resolution to hire recreation assistants.
Moved to approve.
Counselor Paulson moves to approve the employment of recreation assistants for the city of Virginia, Iron Trail Motors Event Center, is there support? By Counselor Biondich, further discussion? Counselor Biondich.
So are we fully staffed with rec assistants yet, or how many more are we needing?
Just, we have, it's with school starting, we have at least four leaving in August, and we have one resigned today, so we're back down five again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And just quickly, are most of the openings during the daytime or at night?
Majority of the work is usually in afternoons and weekends.
Afternoons and weekends, thank you very much. We have to vote on that. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1, the Committee of the Home Meeting that was held on June 6, 2023, return this portion of our city council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Menace. Britt?
Thank you. On June 6, at our Committee of the Home Meeting, John McNamara from Wold Architects was present to discuss the final bid documents for the Virginia Public Safety Center and the solicitation of bids. Wold has met with fire and police staff a few more times regarding changes in the plan and the, changes of the site plan, but the floor plan has remained the same. As Mr. Simonsen talked about, we did get some extra money in the legislature. We got an extra $2 million towards our project, which is, which was a great relief. And we also did get our legislative approval to increase our debt limit the one time for this project. So therefore, after discussion with Pat Wertz and John McNamara, it was moved and supported to approve the resolution regarding laws of Minnesota 2023, Chapter 64, Arco 12, Section 16, which states that we do approve of the legislature increasing our debt limit for the one time for this project.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Friedle, supported by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was also moved and supported to approve the plan specs and design and authorize soliciting bids for the Virginia Public Safety Center project.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Motley, supported by Counselor Friedle, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Tim Rosfitt, Public Works Director, was present to discuss the items related to the Public Works Department. He had received bids for the much-needed heating, cooling, and ventilation system at existing Public Works facilities. The lowest bidder was Independence Heating and Cooling in the amount of $224,940. Funds for this project would come from the General Obligation Bond Series 2023A. It was moved and supported to approve awarding the bid to Independence Heating and Cooling for the Public Works Garage Heating Upgrade Project in the amount of $224,940.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, it's supported by Counselor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Rosfitt has been working with local landowner RGGS to allow city to enter onto their property for the city to reestablish our ditch lines to, in order to allow for better drainage of our storm sewer system. It was moved and supported to approve the access use license agreement with RGGS for drainage ditch re-establishment.
I'll move to approve.
Moved to approve by Counselor Paulson and supported by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
City staff had received bids for the new roof at City Hall. The existing roof has been budgeted to be replaced in 2023 due to numerous leaks in the last five years. It was moved and supported to approve the bid and award the City Hall Reriff Project to A.W. Kettle and Sons in the amount of $247,500, and this also would be a 2023 general obligation bond purchase.
Thank you. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support? By Counselor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Rosfitt came to us with a request to allow us to replace the motor in a Public Utilities John Deere loader. In exchange for us to do that, the utilities would then gift to the city the ownership of the 2015 Komatsu loader. So the motion was to approve the replacement of the motor in the Public Utilities John Deere loader by Northland tractor in the amount of $12,300, authorize the transfer of ownership of the 2015 Komatsu loader from Virginia Public Utilities to the city in payment for the new motor, and then to designate the 1990 Case Loader as surplus equipment.
So moved to approve by Counselor Friedle, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Paul Steinman and Steve Scharf from Baker Tilly were present to discuss information regarding the issuance of the general obligation bond series 2023A. These bonds are designated not to exceed 3 million with a maximum interest rate at 5.75%. However, by the time we do the resolution and the actual bond sale, it could be less. The term is roughly 10 years and paid for by tax levy with the first payment due in 2024 with an annual payment of approximately $420,000. I'm Sheri Erickson. I explained that when the city levies for the bond payment, we must levy 105% of the actual bond payment in order to cover any administrative costs. It was noted that there is a call and option on the structure of this bond so that if interest rates drop dramatically again, we can recall that back and refinance the bond to get a better interest rate. The previous bonds that we held, two previous bonds we held were paid off this year that we had used for equipment purchases over 10 years ago, and thus that dollar amount that we had paid for those two bonds is almost exactly the same dollar amount we'd be paying for the existing, the new bond coming up here. Therefore, after discussion, it was moved and supported to approve the resolution of the city of Virginia, Minnesota regarding the issuance of general obligation bond series 2023A.
Moved by Counselor Paulson, supported by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Because we have authorized two purchases, multiple purchases prior to the actual issuance of the bond, it was moved and supported to approve the resolution authorizing reimbursement back to the city under the general obligation bond series 2023A in case we need to pay for anything before the bond proceeds come in.
Looking for a motion approved by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Motley, further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Matt Reed from SCH, our engineer of record, reviewed the potential 2023 road resurfacing project priorities. The Street and Alley Committee had a meeting to discuss potential mill and overlay project this summer due to the many obstacles for plan finalization. Our major street project that we were planning for this summer has not received clearance yet and thus cannot proceed. But Reed explained the funding issues with the 2023 and 2024 proposed projects and the requirements that require that we have all the property easements completed, and we have not gotten that done yet, so we can't proceed with that larger reconstruction project. However, the Street and Alley Committee discussed creating a potential overlay project for 2023 so that we don't have a year that goes by without any roadwork being completed in Virginia. Some streets that were thrown together came to a total approximate cost of $711,000 for six proposed streets. hundred and eleven thousand for six proposed streets. We suggested taking out, um, one of them and bringing the cost down to approximately five hundred and sixty-six thousand. Mill and overlay often last up to ten to twenty, ten to fifteen years. We try to find streets that we know aren't going to have any reconstruction within the next ten to fifteen years or don't have any current problems with water main breaks or any other known issues. We did discuss that if we wanted to specially assess for this project, we could. However, it would take a lot of time for this process, and we probably wouldn't be able to complete the overlays this year if we did that. Sherri Erickson, Finance Director, did note that we are, do have some funds available in our reserve investments that we could utilize and end up paying ourselves back with an internal loan if we so chose to do that. It was moved and supported to proceed with the two thousand and twenty-three Road Resurfacing Project Priority Project with approximate cost of five sixty-six, four eighty-seven. And in your packet, we have a resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with S E H for that work. So I'll need two motions, one to approve the project and then one to approve S E H doing the professional services such as design specs and construction management.
Thank you. I'll take the first one to adopt a resolution to approve the professional service agreement with S E H for this project. Moved by Councilor Friedleeb and supported by Councilor Biondich. Further discussion? Councilor Biondich.
And Sherri, could you explain the payback, um, where the dollars come from to pay this back?
Sure.
And when it would be able to be paid back?
Um, at the Committee of the Whole, we talked about, we have investments, the general fund does, strictly general fund investment of, um, a little over six hundred thousand dollars. What we do is, and I thought, I was checking my mail, cause, um, Mia Thibault from Private Regan Buchanan was going to do up a loan, internal loan documentation. Um, we would charge ourself five percent interest and pay back annually, ten-year, and then that way we, we don't have any fees, bond council fees, other than what Maya would do with resolution. But then we could just borrow that money, get it done, and then pay ourselves back.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I did have a resident from Sixth Avenue North, um, asked me how things were coming with this overlay, so I'll be happy to get back to them and tell them that we're working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Biondich. Uh, it has been moved and supported, uh, for the S E H agreement for this, these projects. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and, uh, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. I'll look you for the second motion. And that is to, uh, adopt?
Approve the proposed two thousand and twenty-three road resurfacing project priorities.
In the amount of five hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven
The estimated cost of five hundred and sixty-six.
Estimated cost, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Moved to approve by Councilor Friedleeb, is there support?
Support.
Uh, by Councilor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Stuart Johansson from Northland Realty was present to discuss information regarding a request to modify city right away for an extensive rehab project they have at a residential house at seven thirty-one, Tenth Street North. Johansson is requesting removal of a tree, a city-owned tree on Eighth Avenue and the sidewalk in order to create three parking spots in the rear of the property. After discussion, it was moved and supported to approve the request for the tree removal on Eighth Avenue North, the proposed curb cut that Mr. Johansson proposed with sidewalk replacement onto Eighth Avenue as long as the sidewalk maintains ADA compliance.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Biondich, is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
At the May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three city council meeting, the council did not approve awarding the bids for the Alcott Park Entrance Project due to the project bids coming in over the estimated budget. Since that time, city staff was approached by U.S. Steel, who had the ability to donate for upcoming city projects, and therefore U.S. Steel had agreed to donate one hundred thousand dollars to the city for the Alcott Park Entrance Project. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution accepting the donation for the Alcott Park Entrance Project from U.S. Steel in the amount of a hundred and thousand dollars.
Moved by Councilor Biondich to approve, is supported by Councilor Barnzelli. Further discussion? Uh, this is a great, uh, donation as we have with all our community partners, and I'd like to have an opportunity to maybe draft some kind of a correspondence letter, send them and thank them immensely for the generosity that they've, uh, displayed for this new park project, so, thank you. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported then to award the bid for the Alcott Park Entrance Project to Lenzie Enterprises in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred dollars.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Paulson, is there support? By Councilor, uh, Biondich, is there any further discussion? Councilor Friedleeb.
A quick question. Is there going to continue to be a funding gap? Cause I thought we had only raised about forty-two thousand originally, or is that not the case?
Oh, well, uh, this should cover the cost of the entire project.
It will, thank you.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Councilor Friedleeb. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution ordering the removal of a hazardous building at one-two-six, Seventh Street South.
Moved by Councilor Johnson to approve, supported by? Councilor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
We did the whole review of the two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two legislative bonding priority list and noticed, noted that the list was mostly completed. Our lobbyists in the state of Minnesota are looking for a new project for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four state of Minnesota bonding request. Suggestions that were received include upgrades to City Hall for HVAC windows, a citywide trail system on the east end of town, and upgrades to the golf course.
Name?
Yep, and I will be submitting those on Friday. Letting everybody know.
Yeah, I think you mean by what, June eighteenth?
Yep, and then if that, what happens is when I submit more than one, they will call me about thirty days and ask what our priority is. We'll have to start thinking about what is our priority, but at least we'll get them all submitted, and then we can figure out the priority in the next couple.
Thank you, Britt.
There's a, thank you. Um, the state of Minnesota, Minister's Department of Revenue Tax Agreement with this legislative session have changed a little bit of their terms with our tax revenue. Instead of making two payments a month for our revenue for our sales tax, they're only going to give us one, so we have to approve a new agreement. It was moved and supported to approve the local tax agreement between the Department of Revenue and Virginia for the collection of our local sales and use tax.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Paulson, is there support?
Part.
Uh, by Councilor Friedleeb, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, we had discussion regarding the letter of understanding for the EVO Virginia Airport Authority Secretary Bookkeeper. It was referred back to personnel and personnel to discuss today, so at the Committee of the Whole, we will have an updated, um, letter of understanding for you.
Thank you.
Yep. It was then moved and supported to approve the letter of understanding for, memorandum of understanding for ASME regarding the two thousand and twenty-three Juneteenth holiday.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Biondich, is there support? Is there support?
Support.
Uh, support by Councilor Johnson, is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to hire Carrie Stringer as the temporary parking monitor.
Moved by Councilor Paulson to approve, supported by Councilor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Biondich.
For the temporary, could you explain what, what that means and why that's there?
Uh, the temporary position is because that position is not being, the, the permanent employee is actually filling another role for up to a year. So this position is now open temporarily. Um, they have, there's a special language in the union contract about temporary employees and how they're handled. So, and this person knows that, that they have to follow the temporary language. They can mark the six, a hundred and sixty shifts, Sherri, a hundred and sixty-four?
Uh, Sherri, uh, would you, uh, please tune your line in, uh, would you say sixty of what, how many shifts?
Two sixty-seven shifts.
Two sixty-seven hour shifts.
So that's a hundred and thirty-four, correct?
Stay in the, stay in that rotation. And then within a hundred and thirty-four shifts, we should know what the status of that regular employee is going to be, so.
Thank you, Councilor Biondich. Thank you, Britt. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve the resolution to hire for single role EMT positions, Noah Beria, Briar Baudick, Thomas Wardman, and Cassie Peterson.
So moved.
Uh, moved by Councilor Motley, supported by Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the City of Virginia entry for the two thousand and twenty-three Land of the Loon Parade.
So moved. Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
Part.
By Councilor Paulson, further discussion? Is there going to be, uh, hydration stations along the way, maybe some, uh, uh, some oxygen, O-two? For our quest? All right, moved and supported. Thank you very much. Further discussion? Uh, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve the letter of support for the EV Grow Electric Vehicle with CFI Community Program requested by the Iron Range Resources Department.
Thank you. Uh, looking for a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Moved, uh, by Councilor Paulson for approval, is there support? By Councilor Barnzelli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
May was moved and supported to allow staff to proceed with creating recommendations for the necessary staffing and other items regarding the implementation of the rental ordinance by January first, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved. Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson, is there support?
Part.
A support by Councilor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Councilor Friedleeb.
Have we agreed then on the terms of the fees at this point, or is that still a topic of discussion?
We approved the, uh, rental code ordinance and adopted the resolution for the fees. Uh, there was no change at our last meeting with respect to that, and the motion on the floor is to have staff start, uh, creating a, uh, recommendation, what kind of staffing they want to, uh, accommodate the enforcement of the rental code ordinance.
With the fees as they were proposed.
The fees as they were proposed, yes, sir. You're welcome. So it's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Call please.
Huffy?
No.
Motley?
Yes.
Friedleeb?
No.
Paulson?
Yes.
Biondich?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Aaron Selly?
Motion passes, five-two, thank you.
No further items from that meeting.
Uh, thank you, Britt, uh, for that. So it was a long committee reports, but very fruitful. Would item number ten, Commissioner Lea's, on reports? Does any council have a Commissioner Lea's in a report they'd like to give this evening? Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was able to attend the summer reading kickoff, um, at the public library on Saturday. Um, it started with a brass quintet in which they discussed what the instruments were. Uh, we had seventy-seven individuals, which is the most this quintet had, including being in Duluth, so, um, I've super succeeded. I couldn't tell you how many, probably hundreds of books were given away to students, um, that day. A very great job by all the library staff. Um, so I just want to give a shout out to them and let folks know that there's some opportunities for adults to do some scavenger hunts and some summer reading challenges for them as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Johnson. Hey, any others? Hey, we'll move to item eleven, department head reports. Britt, any more, uh, any more information, any other reports you'd like to disseminate this evening?
Um, just a heads up that we are closed on Juneteenth now, on June nineteenth, so city, all city offices will be closed that day.
Right, by, uh, by state statute, we must be closed.
The state is requiring us to close.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, um. Sherri, do you have anything you'd like to disseminate?
Um, it's status quo yet. We're hopefully have the editor here soon to give you a briefing on the twenty-two, uh, year end. And then, uh, yeah, working on the budget and just hiring, there's, there's a lot going on.
Thank you. Uh, anything, uh, from the city clerk's office? Any information you'd like to disseminate to the council?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Jenny, our, our planning director, uh, and do you have anything you'd like to disseminate? You come to the meetings, uh, on a regular basis, you start to come, so we appreciate you coming in and taking the extra time to do so. It's part of your duties and responsibilities. Is there anything that you'd like to disseminate this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. And, um, I appreciate the opportunity to learn being at these meetings, even though I don't say much a lot, um, of the time. Um, I, I guess I wanted to update, um, Britt sent an email out earlier about the housing study that was sent out, um, and we did also get information from our H R A Director on some of the questions that we had on that. So we'll be digging into that and hope you will too, and have further discussion, um, when we need to on that.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, we'll move tonight to item twelve, council reports. Does that council want to give a report? Councilor, uh, Motley?
Well, just going back to what Jenny was saying, do we have to have like a special